Begin with the pledge of allegiance, please. Again, good morning. Welcome to everybody. We have, all the meeting documents are in the three-ring binder right next to Commissioner Hyburger if anybody would like to see them. Anybody, just a reminder, silence your phones, please. And if anybody needs any listening devices, they are available. Craig Dewey in the corner can help you with that if you need that. Begin looking for a motion to approve our agenda.
So move. Second?
Motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we'll look for a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for January 5th, two weeks ago.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Move.
A motion by Barth and second by Hyburger. Alrighty. Roll call vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, we have bills to be paid in the amount of $5,82,702.52.
Pay the bill.
Second?
By Barth, second by Benega. Any comments? No comments, we'll look for a roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, we have reports from the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office for December of 2020, the registered deeds statement of revenue report for 2020, and numerous auditors' financial reports for December of 2020. Good morning, Vicki.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vicki Hewitt from the Auditor's Office. Here was some December financial information, starting out with our general fund cash balance, sitting at a healthy 14, or excuse me, 30.3 million, up 14.7 million over last year. Again, the 10.5 million in COVID CARES Act claims have boosted those funds. The highway fund cash balance at $4,060,000, a 5.6 million decrease from last year. And then expenditures, total expenditures are at 97.3% of budget, dead even with last year. Personnel at 97.2%, just under last year's percent of budget, and other expenses at 97.6%, so just percent or so over last year. And then revenues, total revenue at 74.7 million, 117% of budget, again due to a lot of those unbudgeted revenue, the claims and other revenues. Taxes are at 99.1% of budget, so just .1% over last year. And then other revenues at 167.8% of budget. Again, those COVID claims are contributing to that. And we will have, we're still posting 13-month transactions to December, so through next week, so we'll have updates for that later in the month or early February. So, but we're sitting good for the end of the year here.
Thank you, Vicki. Questions, comments from anybody?
Vicki, I'm just curious, where are we on the CARES Act reimbursements?
I believe, Kim, so we have another $3 million to claim, and, you know, mostly salaries for December. So, that will hit, we will accrue that back to 2020 as far as revenue, but of course it won't hit the cash, but, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Vicki, is the monies that we've received so far that's in the general fund, is that an independent restricted account at this point?
It is, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Vicki. Appreciate it. Move on to personnel actions. Is Carrie Dever in the wings?
Motion to approve the routine action?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second for the routine personnel actions. Comments? Roll call vote.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We have abatements recommended for approval. We have Chris Lilla from the Director of Equalization.
Good morning, Commissioner. Yes, before you today, we have three abatements, City of Sioux Falls, Avera McKinnon, and a Scott Simmonsma. The first one I'll touch on is City of Sioux Falls, it was an exempt property. They, they're an exempt entity and they purchased property that was on the tax rolls. So, from the date of their purchase, then we will recommend a tax abatement. Same with Avera McKinnon. Scott Simmonsma, we'll touch on that one individually.
Okay, so do we take them each individually? Is that the proper method, or do we have to, can we vote on the first two as, have to do each one individually? Sorry. Okay, each one individually. So, looking for a motion for the City of Sioux Falls not to have to pay property taxes?
I'm making it...
Second?
Motion and a second, roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have one for Avera McKinnon, obviously a nonprofit, looking for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. And let's go to...
Yeah, the next one, I'm not sure if Scott Simmonsma is here. He has to be notified on this one here, so I'll touch base on this one here. So, we had some questions on this. Cindy had sent me an email just asking for some clarification, so I'll touch base on this one here. Myself, as a department head, I cannot deny anybody requesting an abatement. If they request an abatement for any reason, I have to honor that abatement. At that point, it is my duty to investigate whether that abatement is valid or not, and then make a recommendation to the county commission on whether I feel it is valid and should be approved, or whether it should be denied. This one here, I am recommending denial. I sat with him and explained everything to him and how it came about, and he still chose to pursue the abatement. As I told him, you have the power to override my approval. It's only a recommendation from me. So, on this particular one, this gentleman, he is a farmer and he owns some farm land, quite a bit of farm land to qualify. He acquired another piece of property that was under our minimum acre requirements and was previously non-egg. So, when we get the sale, you know, we transfer that property to his name, but there is no search, or, you know, we just don't have the time, the manpower to go out and search. Does, is he a farmer? Does he own enough? Is he qualified, all of that? So, there's an application process. Every parcel of ground that is under 40 acres, for sure, needs an application. We received no application when he bought this property, therefore we assessed it, continued to assess it as it had been, as non-egg. Moved forward a year, he got his tax bill, he thought they were a little high, so he inquires about it and came in and filled out the application. We've got him applied for 21 pay 22 taxes for this piece to adjoin his other management unit to be qualified for egg. So, the premise being it was non-egg before, he purchased it as non-egg, we received no application. In my opinion, there's nothing that we can do. It's no different than an owner occupied or something of that sort. So, my recommendation is that, is for denial on this piece for the 20 pay 21 taxes.
Okay. Questions for Chris? I guess the only question I would have, so it's ag going forward?
Correct.
It's just for this tax year, and the burden to apply obviously falls back to him?
Correct.
And there is no recourse under state statute for us to...
The abatement.
Just, okay, okay. Commissioner Hyburger?
So, is this 24 acres adjoining to his current property?
Um, I don't recall if it is adjoining on this particular one or not, but the adjoining is no longer valid anymore. It's a management unit, as long as it's within 20 air miles, and that I can verify. He's got enough acres within 20 air miles.
Follow-up comment, just, you know, for people who are selling land, I can't think of the word I want to say, but the person who's selling the land, not necessarily the homeowner, but the realtor, it would be nice if they would realize that they should probably recommend to people, you know, check your status of, do you have owner occupied or whatever. This happens, not frequently, but enough that it's upsetting when it's going to cost you $1,000, that, you know, if our realtors were informed and just said, "Hey, could you help remind people to check for owner occupied status or ag status before you go into the next year?" It would be helpful.
Yeah, and that's one of the issues with the ag now, is every single piece, when they change the law, every single piece that qualifies for ag, the principal use has to be met, meaning it has to raise an agricultural product on it. Then you have to meet one of the other criteria. It either has to be over 40 acres on its own, or total over 80 within your management unit within 20 air miles. And if that doesn't work, then we've got to look at your income, where you have to make at least $2,500 in all five of the previous years, qualified and certified on your Schedule F, or you have to make at least 10% of the value of the land in three of the five previous years. So, you buy land, we have so many transfers, we don't know, every, every transfer is on its own merits. Every one needs to be investigated, looked at, applied for. So, in this particular one where it was non-egg, had it been ag prior, it would have caused us to look at it, but a non-egg, I don't know him from Adam?
Yeah.
Could have been another non-egg buyer. So, I'm recommending denial.
Commissioner Benega?
This is kind of a crazy question, but in 2019, it was considered non-egg.
Correct.
Nobody's debating that. But was it being farmed?
I think it was by him. I think he was cash renting it.
So, when he bought it, I'm assuming, because he was farming it before, he thought it was ag property?
Could have been, yes.
It's likely too, that this land wasn't purchased through a realtor, if he was actually farming it.
I don't believe it was.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Chris, if somebody in his position going forward, what would be the best way for him to have solved this problem?
Contact our office and make an application.
When he purchased it?
Yep, yep.
Do some, maybe some independent research by calling your office to see if it was classified?
Yep, absolutely. And he got it, that's the other thing I failed to mention on this, he got an assessment notice that said it was non-egg. Again, that could have been his time when he looked at it to say, said on there, "This is non-egg land." We could have resolved it through the appeals last year. Nothing. It wasn't until the taxes came, then he goes, "Hey, you know, this is a little high. I think I want that back." So, I can't recommend approval on this one as a straightforward legal.
Commissioner Benega?
I understand the legal issue. It seems like in some ways, it's a common sense issue too, and the people that were handling his financial transaction would have also noted that it was non-egg property, even if he had been farming it in the past, and should have notified him. Is that accurate or not?
I don't want to make any assumptions on that part. I don't know who held, worked in the closing, and who knew what information, or didn't divulge, or didn't know, or didn't understand.
I mean, obviously, this is frustrating, and it does seem like there should be an easier solution, but it's, as you pointed out earlier, it's the same issue that we deal with, with owner occupied, and we have tried to more clearly mark assessments and things, so that people have an opportunity to have that information. It's just, I would be as guilty as anybody of not paying as close of attention to my mail as I should, and getting it in a pile until later. And so, I mean, we all have a responsibility to pay attention to those kinds of things, and I'm glad it's taken care of going forward, but I won't be supporting the abatement.
So, I need a motion to deny, I believe, and then we would take action upon the motion.
We're all looking at each other, but I think that's probably right, and I would make that motion.
So, we have a motion to deny the abatement.
I'll second it, just because that's, I think that that's the law, and I don't really think we have a choice. I don't like this either. I don't think this is right. I don't think it's right at all, but the other part is, we've already paid those taxes out to the school district, we've paid them out to the municipalities, and we get a very small portion of that $1,000 that we're trying to claw back.
And we have denied an abatement in the past. If I may make a comment, that was contested, and we had to go back and undeny or denial, or something like that, but, so, yeah, it does get a little complicated. So, we have a motion and a second for denial. A roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Abatement is denied.
Thanks, Chris.
I could just suggest that maybe there's a way when we send those out, because this is such a sticky issue, and it's kind of a minute description on the hearing, so to speak, and the statement. I'm wondering if we can stamp those somehow with the whatever. I know it's an extra process, but it, it seems like this kind of thing happens too frequently, and if we can make the owner aware of that, it could solve us having to deal with this.
Our new format that's coming out this year on our assessment notices should be way more descriptive than the past postcards. I, you know, it will clearly state like the owner occupied issue. You know, the other one, if it just had an S, you didn't know if, nobody knew what the S was. Well, now it will state owner occupied on there if you are. So, if you don't see that, you know, it should be a lot more clear. If there's exemptions, you're going to see it, especially if there's ag exemptions. Hopefully, that, the new format will clear a lot of this up. I mean, at that point, there's some responsibility to homeowners. If you're going to own a home or own property, be educated. If nothing else, call our office. We are more than willing to help any taxpayer at any time with any questions they have.
If I may, Chris, in the past, it had been a postcard, and now we're going to
Eight and a half.
An eight and a half by 11:00, and we're spending how much more money in postage?
About $20,000.
$20,000. So, it's not going to be a nice little condensed postcard. You're going to get a letter, and, you know, there's going to be a little bit more reading material for the taxpayers, but there's important information in there.
And per Jean's suggestion, we have stamped on the envelope in red, "Attention Assessment Notice." So, it won't be just coming in in a normal envelope. So, that was a great suggestion, and our printer was able to make that happen, so...
When are those going out?
They've got to be postmarked by March 1st.
Okay.
So, it'll be coming soon. I'm not sure on my timeline. I wanted to get them out mid-February, but we're running through a lot of review things, so I was hoping to get them out sooner. I am not reserved yet to get them out sooner. I'll make the March 1st deadline, but we may come right to the crunch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You have a good day, sir. Alright. Petition for compromise of lien. Melinda? We have DPNO 7988, and the compromise is for $10,359.52.
Good morning, Commissioners. The petitioner is requesting to be, this is a joint lien between, with the petitioner and her ex-spouse. The petitioner is requesting to be released from the lien with payment of $493.92, leaving the remainder of the lien balance at $9,901.60 in the name of the petitioner's ex-spouse. She's in the process of purchasing a home, but due to the lien, she had to pursue another option to move forward and to close. Her husband has deceased. He deceased on April 28, 2017. Now, the couple was married April 11, 1990, and divorced January 12, 1994. She was aware of the poor relief fees recorded in 1991 and 1992 during the period they were married, and is offering to pay the total of $493.92. She's requesting to be relieved of the burden of the lien, because the fees incurred before and after they were married are not her responsibility. Our office did confirm that the lien fees recorded between 1980 and 1987, and between 1994 and 2013, were in fact incurred by her ex-spouse.
Thank you, Melinda. Always a good detailed report. Appreciate it. I don't believe the petitioner is here, so we'll go straight to the commission for questions, motions, considerations. Commissioner Hyburger?
Mr. Chairman, this is Dr.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, I think that clearly we need to take action in a positive way to help this person. I'm not sure we need her $490 or whatever it is. Seems to me that being married to a person with problems that her ex seems to have, is enough reason to excuse her from even the part she's offered to pay. So, my thought would be that we do away with the part she's offered to pay and leave the remainder towards her ex-spouse.
Commissioner Herbert?
Mike, thanks, Commissioner Barth. I would, I would say that we don't have any financials on this person at all, and as far as we know, she could have $60 million in the bank, so I'm not ready to, to let her go on the $493.92, because those were incurred by her and her married spouse at the time. And so, I mean, she maybe doesn't have any money, but we have no way of knowing one way or another. So, I would make a motion that we, we compromise this lien in the amount of $493.92, leaving the rest of the balance against her spouse, but since, ex-spouse, but since her ex-spouse is deceased, it'll just go away.
We have a motion.
My only question, if I might?
Well, let's, I don't know, see, if we have a motion, I'd rather look for a second or let it die for lack of a second. So, is there some...
I can see the motion there. This is John.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Commissioner Benega?
When the, her ex-spouse passed away, there's still a possibility that the house was left in her name in the will that he may have had, and we don't know that.
She is trying to purchase a home, not sell her current home. She's, this is a new home. Oh, you're talking about when they lived together?
When they lived together. If there was no change in the will, and she ended up with the value of the home, which I have no idea what that is, I would think there may be a responsibility for her to pay the whole thing before she takes the assets of the sale of the house.
I thought I read somewhere that he was, he had no assets at his death.
Yeah.
I read that too, but it doesn't say or prove that in the statements that were provided that I saw. It's just an opinion.
I mean, they weren't married at the time of his death, so it would have had a bequest in his will. I mean, I'm not really sure that I follow where you're going with that, but is it that you don't want to compromise at $493?
I guess the issue is, is that we ask people for more information generally than what we have in this, and I understand that that is not a big dollar amount, but if she inherited the house in 2017 and received all the assets when he passed away, which we don't know if that's true or not, it seems to me to settle this for $493 when she may have received the full benefit of the sale of the house in 2018 or 2017 or whatever.
Commissioner Benega, you're referring to a house. What...
Well, I'm not sure if it's a house or what it is, but there was a lien filed on that piece of property.
On the property or the individual?
Well, it, it follows the property wherever you're at when you buy and sell.
Yep.
I don't know if they were renting at the time, when they were married. It seems to be rent amounts, or the amounts that they received assistance on for rent were 250 and 125, which is, I honestly don't know if it's an apartment or a home.
Yeah.
So, yeah, while, while they were married, they were renting, but after they divorced, they're... Okay. Carol?
Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office. You have a few more things to cover on your agenda today, and I'm just wondering if you would want to put this farther down on your agenda, and give Melinda 15 minutes or so maybe to research out that ownership on that property? Would that make sense?
Sure, I can do that.
If, I would just present that as one option for you.
Okay, so, when we already have a motion and a second, what's protocol?
Table it until the end of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can resolve it right now. I don't sense that there are three votes against allowing this.
Okay. I'm going to look to our state's attorney.
Mr. Chair, Eric Bog, Deputy State's Attorney. I would just suggest two things. If you want to delay it, certainly at the permission of the movement in the second, you can remove the motion in the second and address it later. Otherwise, you could address it now. My, my gut instinct without doing further research is, this is a lien against the individuals, not a lien against property, and so, these, this is probably not a property issue. If it had been sold at the time of the decedent's death, it would have been paid at the time it was sold at that time. The purchaser, any good faith purchaser would want that resolved before they took possession of the property, so...
Okay, thank you, Eric.
You're the legal expert.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. We can either vote on it if you, unless you want to rescind your motion and second. Okay, so, we will take a roll call vote on granting the abatement for $493.92, or the compromise.
Hyburger?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
I hate voting on assumptions. I'm going to say no.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries, four to one. Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a muddy one, no doubt. Alrighty. We are now at our opportunity for public comment. I know that we have individuals here for public comment, so if you want to please approach the mic. Give us your name and address, please.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Austin Carlson, and my address is 48763 256 Street, Garrettson, South Dakota. I guess I'm here today to, I guess I'm seeking some leadership support for residents of our county, and then also to try to get the word out to other people in the area. My wife and I purchased our property late this summer. It's been in the family for many, many generations, since 1800s, and we currently farm and live there. So, we've, we've been in this area for a very long time, and happened to just notice there was some activity, trying to, to find out different environmental, basically vetting environmental situations for putting up wind turbines in the Minnesota side of the South Dakota border. So, I guess at that time, we just started kind of checking around our neighbors, see if anybody was aware of this project that's in the proposal, and I have contacted approximately 20 to 25 households situated within that impact zone, and not one South Dakota person was aware of it. So, I guess for sake of time, I'm well aware that this is in Minnesota, that this is happening, and they have their own rules and regulations. My concern is just for the people situated along the border who, you know, have lived there and, and value their quality of life. They value the wildlife, they value their, their property, you know, peace and quiet, and, and just value things as they are. So, until, I guess we've been researching the last month and a half, kind of the process, and we, we've been in contact with South Dakota Public Utilities Commission and the Minnesota Commission as well. And from everything we've learned, there, the ways that people can get involved is through the public comment period that is currently open until January 26. So, I guess I would propose to ask, would any of you be interested in, in sharing in that public comment, and just speaking up for some of the concerns for the people situated in that area? We've got Valley Springs residents that are, they're just outside of the sound. I'm sure they'll hear some of it, but certainly from Valley Springs up to Garrettson, within, I'd say, two miles of the border are the, the main concerns. So, there too, we have Palisades State Park in Garrettson. I mean, there's approximately 100,000 people that travel there through the course of the year. So, just different impacts that this project is going to negatively impact residents of South Dakota, and our county and our township is not going to benefit from it at all. So, I would just ask if there would be any interest in participating in the public comment on behalf of our residents. And I, one other thing, I do have a map available for you. That's the project area that I'm speaking about. And then also, I included the comment period and where the comments need to be sent.
What I'd encourage you to do, sir, if I may, direct... What I'd encourage you to do, sir, if I may, address here is if you could email each of the Commissioners your contact information, because if anybody would want to be involved in that comment period, they'd probably have to do that as an individual. So Melinda or Craig can get you all of our contact information and you can email us your, your name. And I think we, I, I believe I received an email from you already regarding this project. But it didn't involve, you know, the comment period and that type of thing. So if you could email us all individually with your contact information and kind of what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Commissioner Heiburger?
We don't typically comment about public comment, but I think that possibly our planning and zoning is here to, to make a few comments, and I would be interested in hearing what he has to say.
Okay, Scott?
I've, I've been in contact with Scott as well, so.
Okay. Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And Austin is correct. We have had, we've chatted on the phone and via email. And I'm, I hope I helped him with sort of understanding the process of, of planning and zoning and how we would handle wind turbines and wind energy conversion systems in our county. We, as a courtesy, we send out notices to all the property owners within five hundred feet regardless of where they're located. We work with the auditor or the, the counties like Rock County or Lyons County in Iowa. I mean, so we would notify those people. And then in addition, we're required to send a notice to the county auditor if it's within five hundred feet of the county of a state line. That's not the case in Minnesota, and I've encouraged Austin that, you know, he needs to, I mean, if there, if he wants to pursue this further, he would need to work with elected officials, like, like the county commissioners from, from those, from the other counties, Rock County or Pipestone County, and potentially, you know, reach out to national, like representatives and senators. And then I'm glad he is here today because this puts it on your radar as well. Unfortunately, I did have to give him some bad news, and that would be that it's, it's nothing that I can regulate because it's in another state. So, you know, I sort of see that my hands are tied. There's not a lot I can do other than give him some information on how we would have handled it. But that is of little help to him when he's concerned about something that's going on in Minnesota. But, so from a land use issue, Commissioner Heiburger, you're correct. And we, you know, we have our own mechanism, our own regulations here in Minnehaha County, how we deal with it, and it's relatively recently updated. We, we've updated that in the last, you know, five or six years. We, we've looked at hall roads and flicker, you know, the, the flicker, the noise, I mean, that's all addressed. I, I can't say, I, I think that Minnesota uses something similar, but it's probably not identical, so. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but there's very little that we can do other than, as Austin has indicated, you as elected officials can comment, citizens can comment, you contact local officials, express your concerns, write, whatever, but there's not, not a lot of legal recourse as I see it.
Okay, thank you Scott.
Thanks.
Number eighty, Austin. Commissioner Barth?
So I think maybe the, the Speaker, we should get his info and put it in our minutes as well, which would then allow others to comment on it. But Scott is right, we've had this issue come up for us probably four times. And, and I remember one time when we actually had a Rock County Commissioner come to our planning and zoning and ask us to use the setbacks from Minnesota, which are greater, rather than the setbacks of Minnehaha County. And it was for a confined animal feeding operation right near the border, near Garrettson. And the nearest neighbor in Minnesota was beyond our setback, but was within the setback that Minnesota ordinance has specified. So we had to look at, do we, do we use South Dakota, Minnehaha County regs? Or do we use Minnesota's? And we chose to use Minnehaha, and we did approve that project. I just bring this up to say that clearly there are issues along the borders and, you know, this will come up again.
Thank you Commissioner Barth, just so it does prove the world does end at the South Dakota-Minnesota border.
Sure seems like it.
Yep, yep. Thank you Austin, I look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet. Alrighty, we'll move on to regular business. We have a briefing on the proposed highway facility design. This is just a briefing, no action.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Joining me is Josh McEnherne from ISG, Architect of Record for the County in Designing the Highway Maintenance Facility. On December twenty-ninth, you received a briefing on the cost model as well as the proposed budget of total project cost of twelve million dollars. That was broken down in ten point four million dollars of hard construction cost and one point six million dollars in soft costs. In that presentation, walked through site planning as well as the floor plan and some of the different iterations that we have been through regarding value engineering and other efforts to reduce and control the cost of that total project cost. Following that presentation, I followed up with each of you and visited to see if there are any questions or concerns. No concerns were raised at that time. Again, we just want to make sure that you had at least a couple of weeks since that presentation to be able to process the information and let it sit, since we did not, the commission did not meet last Tuesday on January twelfth. That's why we're discussing this here today. Following input from you, I would look for direction, a vote is not required, but look for direction to be able to proceed from pre schematic design into the schematic design phase for the project. Would be happy to answer any questions, or Josh would be happy to answer any questions if you have architecture related.
Commissioners, Commissioner Bender?
Well, I just know from the briefing and from visiting with Commissioners Benega and Karski that a lot of very hard work has gone into getting us to this point. It's been a lot of work on the scope of the project going into these projects. We didn't, we had an idea, some rough estimates of how much the cost was going to be, but, you know, it's not till you actually get the, the construction manager on board that you start getting real numbers and you can work hard on the scope. I'm comfortable with the scope that you guys have arrived at. I think I'm, I'm also the liaison to the Highway Department. I know that they've been very involved in it as well. And I think while there was some gnashing of teeth along the way, I think that at the end, everybody feels good about where the scope ended up. And I'm fully supportive of the project that is in front of us right now.
I see a lot of heads nodding and there's gnashing, grinding, all sorts of teeth.
It's not, it's not a fun process, but it's an important process.
Commissioner Barth, comments? Nope, okay.
Well, I just know that there's a lot of work.
Yes, by a lot of people. So, thank you Craig. It looks like we have some consensus as to, let's keep the, keep the wheels turning.
All right, thank you Commissioners, have a good day.
Thank you.
Alrighty, move on, action item. Authorize the Chair to sign a second interim agreement with JLG for Design Services. Craig?
Craig Dewey, Commission Office. The Administration and Extension Building is undergoing planning for the remodel process. An interim agreement was before you with JLG Architects for that remodel back in October. That interim agreement has expired, so a second interim agreement is before you today with the goal of getting the full and final agreement before you sometime next month in February. The goal is to not have another interim agreement. Our owner's representative is working on negotiating those contract details with our legal team and JLG as well. So again, this second interim agreement would bill out at the hourly rates that are the same as in the first interim agreement. And then there are some additional services regarding office furniture inventory and how that would be incorporated into the design phase. And that office furniture inventory, the measuring process was complete at the end of December. And so with that data that's being collected, we'll receive a full inventory with pictures so we know what we have in the dimensions. Where that comes in as a really helpful matter is when we actually get to designing the specific workspace, we'll be able to fit the exact measurements of desks or systems furniture, which I don't believe we have any systems furniture that we'll be able to reuse in the remodel. But that will allow us to make sure that we have the right amount of furniture. There will be some furniture that we will have to purchase, but the good news is, is that initial indications right now are that many pieces of furniture would be able to be reused in this remodel process. I would be happy to answer any other questions about this interim agreement.
Questions, Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment, and maybe you said this Craig, and I just missed it. But, so you mentioned that the office standards have been removed from this contract, but that's only because Tegra is now going to be doing them, and that's the only reason. It's like, we're not getting rid of office standards.
That's correct. I'd be happy to offer a little bit further clarification on that, just so that the rest of the Commission is aware. As Commissioner Heiburger mentioned, Tegra, our owner's rep, has a lot of experience working with different organizations in seeing what they have developed for office standards. And so we will be getting a document of guidance or standards that Tegra will and is working on developing. So we will have that guidance that, not only that we're able to use for this project as well as the Extension Building remodel, but also if there would be any future remodeling that would occur or additional office spaces that would be added, this could apply to those as well so that there would be a standard across the county that would not only allow for the standardization of the workspace itself, but also some standardization of what type of furniture that the county would purchase. So it'd make it much more straightforward and in many ways could offer maybe more fairness or parity amongst different employees and departments for predictability of what workspace would look like.
Other comments? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to authorize a second interim agreement.
That's my motion.
Second?
Aye.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Move into our briefing on the terms of the gravel pit sale. This is kind of going to be more of a discussion amongst the Commissioners what we want to include in the terms. Craig?
Morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Last item I have before you today. As you are aware and the public may be aware, the county has declared an unmined gravel pit as surplus property, and that will be auctioned off on February eighth at eleven a.m. in the old Courthouse Museum. The Commission provided previous direction to set the reserve price for that auction at nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If individuals or businesses, organizations would be interested in finding out more about the property, you can go to Minnehaha County's website under the notices and sale notices, and you will see the notice of sale for the auction and the marketing materials. In those marketing materials, you'll see a number of different items related to the property, including the borings report and the locations of those different borings, those geotechnical tests that were conducted. So that would be available to any prospective buyer. We also have other documentation that might be of interest as far as the plating and then the deed. There's a law enforcement shooting range that's off to the north, so the deed has language protecting the continued operation of that law enforcement shooting range. So now that I've gotten done with a brief marketing pitch for anyone who's a potential buyer for the project, there is remaining direction regarding a few of the sales terms for the day of the auction and what the Commission would like to see. And I have visited with Kevin Weeman at Weeman Auction, the auctioneer who will be conducting the auction, as well as our State's Attorney's Office. And the three different items that we would look to have direction on is time to provide a down payment once a successful bidder would win the auction, the amount of the down payment, as well as the days to close from the auction date. So as you can see in the memo here, general recommendations being provided by Kevin Weeman are forty-eight hours to provide a down payment once the auction closes, then a down payment amount of either ten percent or fifteen percent. And then he is also recommending that days to close from the auction date could be no longer than sixty days. Certainly if the buyer would be interested in bumping that up, I don't think the Commission would have any issue with closing earlier and getting that check in hand. Now that those recommendations have been presented though, certainly would look for your discussion and input on what you would like to see for those terms.
Commissioners, comments about these provisions or any additional or things you'd like to see not or taken away? Commissioner Benega?
Didn't we talk about a minimum payment for purchase at one point?
The reserve price of nine fifty?
Yeah, but I don't see that listed in the conversation. Is that something we need to talk about?
That has already been set by the Commissioners, the nine fifty?
But I guess that, what I was looking for was maybe that we would talk about that today so there would be some public
Oh, sure.
awareness of the fact that there's going to be a minimum dollar amount. I don't know if that's necessary.
Yeah, I, I think this is more about the terms of the sale once the auction is closed. Basically, the final bid has been accepted, I think is what we're discussing today.
I understand that, but if I was going to that, didn't know that until I got there, I'd probably be a little disappointed.
Olivia?
Sorry to interrupt, but since I published the notice, it was placed on the notice, correct Craig? That was what you sent me? So it was in the notice of sale?
I'm just looking for free publicity.
I think you got it. Yep, so, yep.
Okay, maybe. The provisions that you're, are being recommended, are being recommended by our, as kind of standard by the auctioneer, I'm assuming. They have the forty-eight hour down payment that is non-refundable of ten percent and to close within sixty days. Those are all pretty standard type of?
That's a great question. So there are ranges that could occur. Some auctions require an immediate down payment. Other auctions could require payment by a certified check after the auction. And the reason why Kevin Weeman is recommending the specifics of the forty-eight hours is due to the publishing requirements for government that exist. And just saying that he would really hate to see a sale fall through because someone can't get a, a check by the end of the day to the county. And so that's why he's recommending, for example, the forty-eight hour provision. And he is not recommending that you would have to have a certified check. That would certainly be an option in that, just as one example of the, the range of different terms that could be offered for that time to provide the down payment. It looks like Commissioner Bender has a question or comment.
I just a, a comment. I mean, I think that these are pretty standard provisions from what I've seen for auctions. I would be fine with ten percent, non-refundable. And I also think that if we ask for pre-authorization, pre-approval, which I also think is fairly common in these kinds of auctions, that that protects us from the forty-eight hour option that they have to provide the checks, so.
Some sort of letter?
Yeah, it's just that shows that they, you know, that their lender or somebody is, has, saying that they're authorized, that they have funds that would
Up to a certain dollar amount?
Yeah, so that they could afford to pay for it.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I would support that, and, and I'm going to reiterate Commissioner Benega's comment is that we have, we have a, a minimum bid of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this. So there's your free publicity again.
Are we in need of any legal advice?
Mr. Chairman, Eric Bog, State's Attorney's Office. No, I don't, don't know if Maggie was the one that was the person providing?
Judy Workman.
Judy was, okay. My experience is it's time of sale, not forty-eight hours. That's the only difference I would have with the recommendations. But if the auctioneer has logic behind it and you're comfortable with forty-eight hours, it's just a lot of money to let somebody walk away for two days before they, they give you a payment, so.
Could be six figures easily, yeah.
And it's just the ten percent. I mean, it's, or the ten or fifteen percent down payment that we're asking for it on the day of sale, not the, not the full amount, yeah. I mean, that's not a hill I would die on if we want to make it, if we want to have them required to pay, make that payment on that day. I'd be open to that. I, I think the kind of bidders that we're going to get on this project are not going to have a problem providing that payment that day.
Barth or Benega, comments?
The only thing I've seen in some of these, and I haven't done very much of this, is a letter of credit from the bank saying that they're able to do the ten percent down payment, which is generally a range, but it gives you some satisfaction that, you know, that they do have the ability to make the payment. do have the ability to make the payment.
So if we do the down payment at the time of the sale, we probably wouldn't need the letter of credit for the down payment, but for the balance, I think, is what Commissioner Bender was
Right, I would have, I mean, regardless of whether we require the payment on the day of or within 48 hours, I still think asking for a letter of preapproval or prequalification is prudent.
Okay. So we're looking for down payment at the date of sale, and a letter of qualification to finance the balance of the, the purchase. And we're looking for 10% and to close within 60 days.
I'm good with that.
I'm fine.
So, given that we're at a commission meeting, I just want to make sure that I have a clear understanding of what the commission is directing. So you are looking for payment, an initial down payment of 10% due on the date of the sale, along with a letter from a, their financial institution, the successful bidder's financial institution, indicating that they are able to have access to funding to cover the remainder of the balance of the sale. And then additionally, the last point is closing no longer than 60 days from the date of the sale. Is that correct?
I think we hit it.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other, I guess, the other comment that I would make about the marketing materials is that we do have a broker's, commercial real estate broker's opinion of value that's up on the website, as well as part of the marketing materials, and the appraisal board, so that potential buyers could see the rationale for why the commission selected that $950,000 reserve price.
And if I understand correctly, we are permitting individuals to hire their own people to go out and take their own borings if they want to, is that correct?
That's correct. That does need to be coordinated through the commission office, so individuals can contact the commission office. And we've had, while there are a number of interested parties, we have had an interested party who is proceeding with wanting to collect some additional samples on top of what was collected through the county's already released geotechnical test results. So any other parties can contact the commission office, and we'd be happy to facilitate that process, or answer any other questions about the property.
Excellent. So you are the point of contact?
Yes.
Thank you, Craig. Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good hard work. All righty, we have a presentation of the planning and zoning and parks department. Scott Anderson, I hope Scott's still around. There he is.
Once again, Scott Anderson, your planning director, and I have a short presentation for you. And afterwards, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. A lot of people understand or already know what planning and zoning does. We issue building permits, and we work with the public. So some of this is just going to be sort of a repeat of, of what you know, but it's always good to get that information out there, because there are still many people that aren't aware that you need to get a building permit in the county to build structures and other, other information. So some of the things that we've already completed, we do code enforcement and CUP inspections, conditional use permit inspections, one year and two years after they've been approved. We issue building permits, we issue all the septic permits for the county, and septic permits can include replacing a holding tank, extending a drain field. Those all require a permit be obtained. And then, of course, a building permit. Any structures that are larger than 120 square feet are required to get a building permit. We do not require building permits. We're a little bit different than the city. We do not require building permits to reshingle your house, to re-side your house, or to put, like, new windows in, as long as you're not changing the framing. And that's a little bit different than the city. So the reason that we do that is because it doesn't change the, we don't see that it changes the value of the structure. So replacing the siding doesn't increase the value of your house. We're looking at building permits that are actually going to change the value of that property. So just so the public is aware of that, we get a lot of questions about reshingling and re-siding. And then, last year, we updated our manufactured home ordinance. You may recall, we changed it from an exterior wall to piers, that, that option. We worked, last, last year, we also enacted a joint agreement with Lincoln County for a mutual service, or a mutual agreement for Lincoln County to conduct building permits, building inspections, sorry, permit inspections. And we actually used that this year when we had, when it was necessary, when our building inspector was out for a time, and that worked out really well. I filled in where needed, and Lincoln County came up and did, I think, three or four final inspections, so they could get their certificate of occupancy, so they could close on properties. And we conducted, we worked with the Census Bureau last year to work on making sure that all their addresses were correct, verifying all the new addresses that have been issued over the last 10 years. And if you think about it, we issue about 60 to 70 new address points for new single-family residences per year. So that's about 700 to 1,000 new addresses that we wanted to make sure that we get those into the database, because that will give the, the most accurate picture of the census for us and our community. Last year, we also entered into an agreement with the city of Sioux Falls to do our GIS flyover, and we got new pictometry imagery, and that's up on our, on our website, and the public is using it. We implemented a life jacket station at Wall Lake due to a tragedy, or two tragedies, and we, that is something new that we worked with Game Fish and Parks, Emergency Management, Friends of Wall Lake. So that was a, a large process that we worked on, and it's, and it's there. And then, we also streamlined our plating, plating submittal process, where we just, now it's just, you bring it in, and one week later, you, you pick it up. So it's, it's just the day you bring it in, one week later, you pick it up. And that was easier than, we, we were on sort of a Tuesday-to-a-Tuesday schedule. The problem with that is if you brought it in on a Wednesday, you had to basically wait two weeks. So we just shortened it, and we could get it done quicker, and there was no reason, so we just moved that around to help the public. So then the next item is what we are currently doing, as I indicated, all of those things, like building inspection, code enforcement. We are always in the process of taking in applications for conditional use permits and rezonings, variances, plan developments, amendments to plan developments. We also then work with people that bring in code revisions for, like, the Manufactured Home Association, they brought in their change. And we continue to try and keep our, keep information out to the public on our Facebook pages and our county website. And then, we, due to COVID, have had a major switch to, from going basically solely from in-person planning commission meetings to Zoom meetings, and I think those have worked really well. We have gotten a lot of participation. Surprisingly, a lot of participation on the Zoom, with the Zoom meetings, so that has been something new that we're continuing to do. The next portion is sort of where we end up with code enforcement issues and, and code enforcement cases. We, we had 22 nuisance cases opened up in 2020, 13 zoning, zoning violations, like operating a business without a permit, or a conditional use permit violation. So we had a total of 37 permits, or, sorry, code enforcement files that were opened up. And you can see that we ended up carrying over a number of those. And the reason that we carry those over, we have 32 open complaints, and some, some of that is, we are continuing to monitor the situation. Some of, some of those open cases may revolve around people that are not cooperative. And we tend to like to be, give them as many opportunities as possible, and sometimes that can mean, like, three or four letters. Often, it means that I have staff that goes out there. When you're dealing with people that have, let's just say, hoarding issues, you have to sort of, you know, work, work with them, because you may, it's a little bit of, like, handholding. You have to send a staff member out there, and they'll, they'll, you know, say, okay, you've, you've done really good on getting this, but we still need you to work on this. And so that's why we have several of those open. And then, the next slide will sort of go over the number of, of permits that we have dealt with and approved. We, we had 48 conditional use permits, two variances, some temporary uses, text amendments. Those are all spelled out there. We also did about 60 plats, I don't know if that's in there, preliminary plans. We also did about 60 final plats, and those we work with closely with the highway department, equalization, registered deeds, I mean, all our offices work together on those. The next item is what we're doing next, and some of the things that we have planned. We are continuing our, our in-person digital plating, planning meetings, and those have worked out really well. We continue to review our zoning ordinance, and we work, reach out with social media. There could be some text amendments, we're anticipating that will need to be done. And we are now looking at the potential for online building permit submittals. That's something that we, we can't do right now, because we have no mechanism for accepting money online. And that's something I'm working with Monty and I, at the IT department, on how we can, what kind of platform we can use to accept plans online and get that money. And there are some state law issues about, as you know, you have to, we have to accept the, we have to collect the amount, the amount that's indicated. So there's a fee in there, and I'm not sure how we're going to work that. And then, we're looking at some potential park improvements with some tree planting, and I'm working with a property owner on a potential small, like, less than a half an acre of land acquisition that's in the middle of land that we now own. So it'd be logical if we could do something with that property that is completely surrounded by property that is already county park land. And then, the next, we also continue to work with municipalities, and I think we could expand that to say, we continue to work with not only municipalities, but other counties like Lincoln County, Rock County, Lyons County, Iowa, Moody County. So there are a number of counties that we have projects that sort of spill over. And, and as I indicated earlier this morning, we sort of reach out when we have projects. I, I always feel like it's important to go the extra mile and just inform as many people as you can. You can't, you, you have to involve people, because it's, they're going to hear about it one way or another, and you want to get it out there, and make sure that you're involving, getting people involved in the process. And I think they appreciate that, and so that's one of the things that we really put a lot of effort on. And then, I would, before I wrap up, I just wanted to also then just touch on, this wasn't in your presentation, but it is information that I, I hand out to you. We, we had really a very active year last year for building inspections and building permits. We issued, we issued about 555 building permits in 2020, which was about 100 more than we issued in 2019. But more significantly, we, the value of all those building permits was almost $62 million, and that was about $25 million more than the previous year, so almost double the valuation, which is really astounding. And when you think about it, it's about 10%, 10% of what the value of the city of Sioux Falls did. And in the county is 20,000 people, and the city of Sioux Falls is, you know, 200,000. So, I mean, it really shows that there was a lot of, of building value that was occurring. A lot of those were, we had some very large ag projects. We also had some large commercial industrial projects. And so that's very good, and that's good numbers for us, and it represents a lot of work, despite the fact that we were, the building was physically closed for almost three months. We still accommodated everyone that needed a building permit, and either brought them up, you know, or, or met them outside and had it all ready for them to go. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. It's just sort of, we continue doing what we always do, and enjoy working with the public, and working with the planning commission, working with you. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Scott. Anytime we can make government more user-friendly and collaborative is definitely a win for citizens, so thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Barth?
Chairman.
Yes.
Hey Scott, you know, many of the functions that you have bring in revenue to the county, do you have any idea what the number is that, the building permits and penalties that your department brings in?
Yes. I, I sure do. In 2020, we took in about $245,000 for building permits, and then we took in another for plats, about $20,000. For septic permits, we took in $19,000, and then for CUP applications is about $15,000. And then, we also work with CCOG, and as part of the transportation, the metro, the metro area, we can, we also get, generate revenue for work that we do that's transportation-related through the MPO, and that accounts for about $50,000 that we bring in for our, like, maintaining the GIS database, transportation-related meetings, working with the state and the city, and our own, I know the highway department's doing a transportation study on the, at the Crooks exit. So those, when we participate with those and provide information and attend meetings, we are able to basically, like, billable hours that we send back to CCOG and, and federal highway, and those are reimbursed to us.
Scott, our GIS database, that's open to the public, correct?
Yes, it is.
So anybody can go in and take a look at our flyover and at their property, and it's all pretty current, and they see what we see.
And, and there's also information on there that gives them, you know, property owner information, lot sizes. You can go on, there's a number of layers. You can look at the zoning, you can look, there's contours, aquifer information, soil types, there's all kinds of stuff that you can, information that you can pull down off there.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments, questions? Great presentation, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next presentation is from Human Resources, Carrie Dever. No Carrie?
She's coming.
She's coming? Okay. All right, Carrie.
Morning. Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have just a quick presentation for you on the items that the county is, or that the HR office has been working on over the past year, and what we're planning for the future year. And then, as is in the past, I've gone over some statistics about the county workforce that I'd like to share with you. For our projects from the past year, we've been working on, during the past year, we worked on finding and identifying a new flexible spending account plan provider. And we were successful in doing that, and that will be, continue to be a project for the upcoming year, as well as we make that transition, but we're moving to UMR, and that was effective the first of this year. Another project from last year was the new Federal Motor Carrier Safety Act regulations regarding their commercial driver's license drug and alcohol clearinghouse. The county does do annual driver's license checks of all of our employees who drive. This takes it to a new level, where we now do annual checks for our CDL drivers of any drug and alcohol potential violations, and that also occurs for any candidates for employment that we're looking at hiring. COVID-19, big surprise, but this was probably our number-one project from the last year. It's been very active, and I want to start by thanking our employees, our department heads. We've all been working on this throughout the past year and adjusting to regulations, safety issues, and of course, we're all managing those issues in our personal lives as well. We've been fortunate, or we're currently very, very fortunate, that we probably have some of the lowest numbers that we've had all year for employees who are out currently, but it has been very active. I think we've processed around 530 different leave applications over the past year. I think we've processed around 530 different leave applications over the past year. At the highest point, we had 13% of our staff who were impacted at one point in time, either because they had COVID, maybe a family member had COVID, or they were quarantined. So it's been a very, very busy year, but we're looking forward, and I think we're all adapting a little bit to that, and hopefully looking forward to resolution of that, ideally the upcoming, I guess it's anyone's guess, but hopefully within the next half year or so. And then with that, unless there's questions on COVID-19, I'll move on to.
I'm curious if, you might want to just give an update about the vaccination process for COVID-19.
Oh, that's a very good point. The vaccination process, you may have heard, of course, is on a tiered basis where they're identifying different portions of the population to vaccinate. One of the very first populations that was eligible for the vaccination included law enforcement. So our staff, we're very fortunate here that over half of our staff have already had an opportunity to receive the vaccine if they wished. We don't have any numbers on who actually took the vaccine because it was an open clinic, but we've been fortunate in that regard as well. So we'll continue to work with our local providers as we learn that other staff are eligible for the vaccine and making that available to our employees so that they can go as well. All right. For the review of the workforce data, I give you this synopsis each year. It looks pretty steep in the number of positions that have grown, and these are our full-time equivalents, year over year. Last year at this time, we had looked at about a 10% increase in growth over five years, and we're right on track with that this year as well. At some point, that will probably decline. You'll recall that we've added several new positions in the law enforcement area, which of course is impacting in particular that 573 to 598 number. Our workforce by years of service, I think this chart is somewhat misleading. So what I want to point out is it looks like we're split about evenly, correct? But the right-hand side of that chart is really employees who have in those sections zero to one year of service, two to three years of service, and then four to five. On the other side of the chart, you're seeing groupings of closer to four to five years each. So what this really says to me, and says to us and or anyone looking at this, is that over half of our population has less than five years of service. This is an uptick from last year's presentation where it was about 47%. I don't think that's reflective of anything other than the new positions that we've added over the past year.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
Carrie, of the 20 people that are, or the people that have 20 years, how many of them have reached the top of their scale? Because some of them, obviously, you go from being a correctional officer to being a captain or whatever, and the scale starts over again. How many people are topped out in their salary bracket?
I think that's about two more slides down.
It, it is. It's coming up.
Well, I just forgot it.
Okay. I would say, all right, okay. To jump just a little bit ahead, we have about 15% of our population that's at the maximum. I have not broken those down though by their years of service, so I couldn't give that to you off the top of my head, but we could certainly look at that and send that to you. But you're exactly right, Commissioner Barth, that when you say that, it's, it's not a foregone conclusion that if you've been here 16 years, you're going to be at the top of the scale. It's dependent upon several factors, including where you were hired or if you promoted since you were hired.
Okay.
All right. For the workforce by age, this has also shifted only slightly. It's a very, very comparable breakdown to last year, almost identical. And you'll see that we do have a little slight sliver this year that we didn't have last year of employees between the groups, age group of 18 to 20. If I'd run this report two months or two weeks later, we would have nobody in that group. So very, very small percentage of our population. And then the next slide addresses Commissioner Barth's question. Again, similar to last year, you'll see that we, you know, almost half of our population is within the first four steps of the pay scale. And what that says is what you saw in one of those first charts, that most of our population has worked here for less than five years. And it's not uncommon that people come in. In fact, it's most common that they come in at step one. We have a good portion of our population in those middle ranges. This is down slightly from last year. And instead, then we've seen a slight push to the final range, only about 1%, though. So very, very comparable to last year. The number that maybe has changed a little bit more significantly is the people who are at that maximum step. It was 12% last year, it's 15% this year, so only a few percentage higher. We were anticipating that that would be closer to 17 or 18% this year, but due to turnover and retirements, that number isn't as quite as high as we anticipated. Again, looking forward, I think that 17% estimation for year-end this year is very, very reasonable. I think that's likely to occur. For 2022, we estimate about 20% with turnover. It's possible that might be a little bit lower. So something that we continue to watch very carefully as we consider our employee groups. The turnover history, I'm very pleased to report that our turnover was only at 13% again last year. If you've been on the commission for a while, you probably know that we used to trend closer to 12% in this area. And then we had a couple of years where it went up a little bit more. So I'm happy to see that we're holding steady at 13%. And this is a nice overview of really how our former employees view our benefits and our pay. Gives us valuable information on really are there areas that we need to address, or how do employees really view those benefits. Retirement and holiday benefits continue to be the top. Maybe on the other side of it is the rate of pay for people's positions rated slightly lower. I would say for this one, we don't have as much data as we did in previous years. We do exit turnover meetings with most of our staff and ask them to complete the survey. Given COVID, we had fewer in-person meetings, and so fewer people completed and mailed in the forms. But, but the data that we're getting back is very comparable to past years. Then for future projects, we're going to continue the transition to our new FSA provider, hoping that COVID-19 is not quite the same focus as it was in the past year, and hopefully some of that begins to resolve. The other major project really for us in the upcoming year is we're, you might remember that, I think it was even just last year, I was talking about the past year's project where we'd made this transition to Munis. It's already time for us to go through an upgrade, so that will be a major focus for the upcoming year. We also want to keep an eye on our drug and alcohol procedures, especially given changes in legislation. We're in the process right now of our annual compensation review where we essentially do a new salary survey of all of our comparable entities, and we look at that data. The last thing that I'd like to mention is that we are reviewing SDRS's supplemental retirement program. We are currently, our retirement program is with ICMA. SDRS also offers a product that we think is competitive, and the committee is currently viewing that to determine whether or not we want to make a change.
No contract negotiations this year at all?
Not this year. That's upcoming for next.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Commissioner Bender?
I just would like to thank Carrie and her crew publicly. Given COVID-19 challenges of last year, it's amazing they got anything done besides that. It was a tremendous challenge, and they were always calm in the midst of the storm and a reliable and great resource for folks here at the county to try to navigate their way through, very nimble and willing to react to hourly changes sometimes. So just really want to thank you for all the leadership you demonstrated last year in that area.
Thank you. I'm, I'm grateful if that was the outward appearance. Maybe behind the scenes, it got a little hectic.
Leadership, that's what it requires, apparently, is you just show up and be calm, and people trust you.
Well, I'm very, very grateful to the people that I work with, both at the county, but also very much in the Human Resources office. I'm very fortunate to have a wonderful team that helps me, keep me steady too, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, liaison reports. Anybody in meetings? No liaison. Commissioner Bennega?
Well, both you and I participated in a UDC meeting, and I won't go through all of the budgetary issues, but I would like to let the community know that they're moving projects in exits two and three, which is Minnesota Avenue and Cliff Avenue exits a year back. But talk about a mass change in transportation-related issues, that's going to be significant.
At 41st Street.
Yep.
Yep. Some exciting stuff. Okay, Commissioner Hyburger?
Just to point out that NACO's Legislative Conference will not be in person, but you probably got it in your email box that it is going to go forward virtually, and so just be watching for that. Commissioner Barth had noted that he had it, and he said, well, I'm not going. And just to note that it's virtual this year, and I'm sure you won't participate in all of it. They've got like a week blocked off, but there might be some interesting parts that you want to be a part of. I'm not sure if there's a registration fee or if it's all going to be free. I'm not aware of that yet.
Okay. Commissioner Barth, any liaison reports? Any new business?
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bender?
Commissioner Barth, did you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. I would just note that Commissioner Barth and I both attended the Building Committee subgroup that's focused on the administration building and the extension building. We're meeting every other week with the architects and the contractors that continue to move those conversations forward, similar to the highway. We're now getting numbers back, and we've got some work on our scope as well that we need to do. But it's a good team, and we are, we are moving forward in that process, and, and I appreciate all the folks that are working on that. I also wanted to do a shout out to Commissioner Hyburger and others who have gone through the NACO High Performance Leadership Academy. I started that academy last week. Chris Swanson, our new treasurer, is also attending, as is Carrie Benz. And it is challenging. Last week was challenging. It's a lot of work, a lot of great material. Craig Dewey's been through the program as well as have several other of our leaders here at the county. And I'm really looking forward to the, the rest of the course. And it's, it's great to be able to go through it with some other folks here at the county so we can share notes. And then finally, the, the new HAB, the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, we are having our, we have a meeting here on Thursday. Shelley Anru at the city has been doing a lot of heavy lifting in getting that group organized and, and oriented. And so I'm looking forward to finally getting that off the ground and, and making some good progress moving forward.
Any new business? Old business? Commissioner Barth, that's you?
It sure is me, but no, I've got nothing.
Okay. Sorry, Commissioner. All righty. No exec session today, so look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved.
A motion and a second. Do you need a roll call vote on this? Okay, roll call vote.
Hi.
Bennega?
Hi.
Hyburger?
Hi.
Har?
Hi.
Hi. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.